Township Board of Trustees. This is our regular meeting, December 3rd, 2025. Item one is roll call, I will call the roll. Mr. Snoyk here. Mr. Hermanette.
Here.
Mr. Bradshaw.
Here.
Mr. Harrison is here. Ms. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Zoller.
Here.
Mr. Robertson.
Here.
Item two is pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We give thanks this evening for the opportunity to be here. As we come to the end of the year, we're just grateful for the gifts that you've given us, the gifts that our country and our community gives us. May we be grateful, may we honor all of this and the things that we do. We give thanks to those who protect us while we're here, those in the military, those in the police and fire services. Thank you for their service, for their protection that they give us. Please give your protection to them, come to their families. We ask this in your name. Amen. Item three, consideration of the meeting agenda. I do have one clarification, just so that our approved agenda reads accurate, and that is on item 10E. It listed as a first read, this ordinance, because of the, it is a rate ordinance, does not require two reads, so we can accomplish that in one read. So I'd make a motion that we strike the first read, in that it would simply read an ordinance to amend.
Support.
Moved by Harrison, support by Bradshaw, discussion. All in favor of the change, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the approved agenda will reflect that change. Any other clarifications, deletions, additions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda?
Support.
Moved by Hermanette, support by Snoyk, that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the agenda is approved. I see we have some students with us. I'm going to point out a few things. There's seven members of the board, and we have to have a majority of the members here. So how many members of the board have to be here for us to have a meeting? Thank you, all right. So we can move on. All right. Item four is public comment. Does anyone have any public comment? Seeing none. Item five is inquiry of conflict of interest. So we just adopted our agenda, all the things we're going to work on tonight. So now I'm asking each of the board members, do you have an interest that would, might create a conflict in you discussing or voting upon these? So board members, having reviewed and approved tonight's agenda, does anyone have an interest in any of these items that would prevent you from discussing or voting upon these items? Seeing and hearing none. Item six is approval of the consent agenda. So everything we do requires a vote. Rather than vote on every one of these items individually, we put them in a bundle and vote on them as a package. So that is what the consent agenda is, it's voted on, given the consent at one time.
I'd like to remove G and talk about that.
Okay, that does not require a vote, it is done automatically.
What was it, D or E?
G. G as in Greg.
Manager's report.
Yep. All right, so item G will be removed. Any other requests for removal? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the remaining items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Moved by Snoyk, support by Bradshaw, that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item six, G is the manager's report. Mr. Hermanette.
Yeah, I just had a question, Allison. On this says there's an issue with the pooling water along the trail. The concern is with the water freezing and someone getting hurt. The issue is out of scope for Prime Newhoff and the contractor completed the work. So are we good with this, or?
Yeah, so this is actually, I went over there with the road commission, and this isn't, this isn't an issue with the trail. It's actually an issue with the roadway. And it was present before, before the trail was created, but once the trail was created, it was, it was actually kind of made worse. So they're not able to do anything until the spring, but they'll go back and grind it out and make a, make the water so that it flows into the drain. But they can't do that until the spring, but they will fix it. It's, it's not Prime Newhoff.
So Kent County Road Commission will?
Yep, it's first on their list, and the springs get done.
That's all I had.
Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve six G?
Make a motion to approve six G? Support.
Moved by Hermanette, support by Snoyk, that we approve the manager's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And that item is approved as well. Item 10A is a presentation by Chief Solich, recognized firefighters with five and 10 years of service. Chief?
Thank you, members of the board, and for letting us be at the top. As you can see, I have a motley crew with me here tonight, because we also have a department training. So they'll be rushing next door as soon as this is over. But we think it's important, especially in today's day and age, to recognize our members that have been a part of the department and stay on for a series of time. I remember when I got on, five years, I was still a new guy, 10 years, I was still a new guy. We had people with 35, 40 years, you know, at the time, and that's not the thing anymore. So with that, we've been starting to recognize people with five and 10 and 15 years and so on, as we go forward. So first of all, one of the people I like to recognize, we had, I had six on the agenda or the docket for tonight, but three of them could not make it. So I definitely want to start by recognizing Bobby, where are you at? Come on up here a minute, wait please. So Bobby and the next one I have, too, Kerber, should have been probably recognized last year. He started with us in 2019, so if you do the math, I had one too many fingers for five, but better late than never, I hope. So Bobby came to us, he was actually, when we went to the 24-hour staffing model, he actually applied to take the test and come in in our hiring model, and he worked for the post office at the time. And he couldn't get out of work, so he missed taking the test with us. But he kept his hat in the ring, he worked part-time for us, filling in shifts, and we had a full-time vacancy, and he came on. So been great, Bobby has many years in the fire service. When did he get in, 96, 97?
No.
95?
95.
Okay, so he's, he's been in the fire service a long time, brings a lot to our department. But the biggest thing, I think, anybody over here will tell you, knows with Bobby, is if you walk next door and you see how clean the place is, that's this guy. This is like his, his thing. When our floor scrubber broke, he mopped the entire apparatus bay by hand, okay? I mean, nobody's ever done that before, the whole place. So he's an animal that way, even has some oils and stuff he puts into the floor scrubber to give a seasonal cinnamon vibe to it. I mean, I can't tell you, right? So, so yeah, everybody just.
You just soften him a little bit. From animal to smell.
Right. So with that, we recognize as a small token, when all of our people reach the five-year mark, the five-year recognition is, is a little different name tag, because it puts a bar below it. I don't know if you can see it here. This bar here says "served since," so now it's saying from five years on, now it's starting to track. People sit there and can tell when you worked here. So the less formal version is just their name and what rank they have. So anyways, so recognizing Bobby for five years of service, actually six now.
Go to Brad.
So I'm sure you can't tell a resemblance between these two.
I go to the same harbor, right?
Yeah, right? Yeah, so.
Similar hairstyle.
Yeah. So Brad came to us, same thing, but he actually is one of our original, when we went to 24-hour staff and we had to hire five firefighters, Brad was one of that mix. I was a little, I was a little worried hiring a guy from Allegan County, because he didn't know Kent County and what we thought. I didn't know how this was going to work out. But Brad's our administrative officer, so he's a captain on B shift. So he's in charge when I'm not around on, on his shift. And everything that comes before you with hiring new people, the, the behind-the-scenes stuff, that's this guy. He's calling people, he's looking through applications, do they, do they check the boxes? Is there something we need to go through? He's calling on the phone, setting up interview times, like, that's one of the many things he does. So trying to keep our personnel here, almost everyone can tell you that they dealt with this guy before they, they got hired on in some capacity. So takes care of a lot of those things on the background though for me, a lot of the paperwork. Excel guru as well, so if something I bring to you looks pretty good, it's probably because he did it or somebody else did for me, so. But Brad as well, started in 2019 with us, and you were in the fire service, when did you start? 2000, okay. So he's got 25 years of service too. So we're benefiting greatly from all the years of service they have, the dedication they have to our community here. So again, small token, but this is Captain Brad Kerber, recognizing him for his six years. And by the way, the person that usually takes care of these awards and stuff and everything else like that, lets me know, do them, is this guy? So it's pretty hard to speak up for yourself, so it takes me recognizing my math is a lot to get him in there. So we had three other individuals that were hired in 2020, which would be actually five years, that could be here tonight, and they're on the agenda, so they're Paul Bisher, Mel Oakley, and Andrew Horder, and they're all paid-on-call personnel for us that have been in the system. So, they have one more, where are you at, Mo? So Maurice Weaver, he's actually being recognized for 10 years of service. So I asked him actually earlier, before I came over here, I'm like, Maurice, do you remember who you were hired with? And he can rattle off, there was four of them in the class, and he's the only one left. So it's par for the course, I think we had one guy who was hired by the city of Grand Rapids, one took a, you know, a job, they were paid on-call, took other things. But it's really hard to get people to commit to doing what we do, coming up on these nights, training, doing all this other stuff, and stay with the job for five years, let alone 10. So we do a little something different for, because he's already got the pin of five years. And you're the first one getting these Maurice, because the old ones, we may don't make anymore. But we think everybody loves my coffee, and so you can have your coffee, drink a mug. So we have a, a curve mug here, and so it has, Maurice says that's his badge number 32, has his name on the thing there. So thank you for your 10 years, Maurice, appreciate it. Maurice is the guy paid on-call, doesn't matter, middle of the night, whatever else, if he's around, he's up here. So we can always count on him, so that's all I had.
Do you want pictures, do you want us to vacate?
Should we do a picture up front? Can we do one real quick for you guys?
Let's do that.
And then we get them out.
And then I want to ask every member of the department here to, before we do that, could you give us your name and how long you've been with the department and just worked way down the line? We don't often get to see you and thank you in person, so this is our opportunity, so if we could start there.
I'm in St. Louis, and I've been with the department for just over a year.
I'm Scott Johnson, I've been with them for two months.
Tyler Zell, and I've been with them for a few months.
Caleb Hibler, I've been here since 2018.
Michael White, 13 years.
Kyle Van Ziel.
Four years.
Mike Spanago, a little over a year.
I'm Chad Shadig, two years.
Kyle, 18 years.
Well, not her, three years.
But Ray, three and a half years.
And Drankert, one year.
Tranformah, nine years.
James Fitzsimmons, seven years.
She. Scott, I've been here 23 years.
Nice, all right, thank you. We'll get out of your way, we'll let you do a nice shot. Chief.
Yeah, I should let us do this.
Absolutely.
Should we do that?
Put the shiner. Oh, my ass. Great. One, two, three. You can send your social media and everything.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you, guys.
That's you?
Yeah. It's beard. All right. Item 10B is a presentation regarding the Grand Rapids water, Grand Rapids water and the proposed rates. Do you have a PowerPoint in front of you, board members, that we can follow along with what we're being shown?
All right. Am I good to go? All right. Good evening, thanks for having me. My name is Tyver Bruggie, I'm the utility financial officer for the city of Grand Rapids. One of my core responsibilities is preparing the annual rate study report, which calculates what rates should be for each community that we serve for the coming year. And before we launch into this, there are two quick distinctions I want to make, because there's a little confusion sometimes. Water and sewer rates are completely separate. The systems are completely distinct from each other, their costs have nothing to do with each other, so their rates are not related. That's the first piece. And the second piece is our system serves 12 different communities. Some are on water, some are on sewer, some are on both. But all communities are divided into either a retail community or a wholesale community. Retail communities do not have their own water departments, their own sewer departments, they do not own the assets under the ground, they don't do the maintenance and operations. The city of Grand Rapids handles that. Wholesale communities, such as Caledonia, you guys have your own utility departments. You facilitate delivery to your individual households and dictate that final bill. We build the community as a whole. So that's the quick distinction there. Both, both our retail partners are governed by a, by a single contract, and then our wholesale partnership is also governed by a different contract. And those contracts are 30 years, they get renewed every five years. So they're all, we're always somewhere between 25 and 30 years left on that contract. And those contracts largely dictate this methodology. Certain pieces of it are vague, and we have some flexibility, and other pieces are very specific in how we calculate these rates. Now, the way that we calculate each community's specific rates is we first calculate that community's revenue requirement, which, as the name implies, is how much revenue a community needs to generate in a year to cover their share of the system costs. So the higher the revenue requirement, the higher the rates. Couple of things increase the revenue requirement, so operational expenses like labor, electricity, chemicals, all of that gets built into it. On top of that, you have assets. So if we put a million-dollar pipe in the ground, we don't have to build the full million dollars into rates in a single year. We get to spread it out as the asset depreciates over its life. We also have to collect a return on investment. So any assets that we put in the service, based on our contract, we have to collect a return on the value of those assets. And that's largely tied to a national index called the Bond Buyers Index, which is based, which shows the average cost of municipal debt, because we have to service that debt in addition to paying for the asset itself. There are a couple of things that help reduce revenue requirements. So any revenue that we get from a source other than rates helps reduce the amount we need to collect through rates. So, for example, our waste treatment plant has biodigesters that turn municipal waste into natural gas. We sell that, all that revenue helps reduce rates for every community on the system. And then there's penalty revenue, we won't get into that too much, because we don't assess penalties, we don't assess fees on wholesale communities. So that's kind of not relevant to this situation. And then lastly, we balance all of this against build volume. How much water do we expect to sell? How much sewage do we expect to treat? The more units that we treat or sell, the more we can spread out those fixed costs, and the less we have to charge per unit. So that's kind of how we arrive at these rates. And I don't want to bury the lead, so this table shows how the rates are changing for each community. On the left, you see water system, on the right, you see the sewer system. And I highlighted down at the bottom, the system averages. So across the whole water system, rates generally are going up 6.38%. And in the sewer system, we're actually cutting rates for the most part, a little bit over 3%. And then you'll see Caledonia is highlighted there as well. Water, there's no comparison, because this is the first year that Caledonia will be a wholesale water customer. And on the sewer side, a pretty significant cut in sewer rates, a little bit under 12% reduction. And we'll get into why those numbers are what they are in a minute. Looking at how the rate changes is one thing, in terms of percentage, but it's helpful to know what the actual rates are. And so this is showing you the rates for all of our wholesale communities, so you can kind of compare how it is for East Grand Rapids or in Ada. And you'll see again, for Caledonia, there's no change in the water one. On the sewer side, the monthly service fee goes from $743 to $747, a half a percent increase. But then the commodity charge, which is what we assess for every million gallons of sewage that we handle, is going down about 12%, so about $1,000. Now, how did we, what, what's getting built into these rates? So we'll start with water. So both sewer and water have a commodity charge, which is per unit, so the more you use, the more you pay, and then a monthly service charge, which has to get levied no matter how much is used. The commodity charge is based on integrated expenses. And integrated expenses are just expenses that affect every single community on our system. So the Lake Michigan filtration plant, doesn't matter if you're wholesale, retail, Ada, Caledonia, you benefit from that filtration plant. So that's an integrated cost. And integrated costs are allocated each community based on two things. The size of your service district, and then more heavily, it's based on your share of overall flow. So Caledonia, using a lot less water than the city of Grand Rapids itself, gets a much smaller share of integrated costs. About 1.7% goes to Caledonia for this. So that's how we calculate that commodity charge of $1.69 per 100 cubic feet, which is about 750 gallons of water. The monthly service charge that doesn't fluctuate based on consumption, that's based on non-integrated costs. Non-integrated costs mostly are costs that are specific to your community, but it could be a cost that is related to an asset that serves your community and maybe one other. So if we have water pipes that serve Caledonia, but also Cascade Township, only those two communities have to pay for it. And so that's what goes into that monthly service charge, are the non-integrated costs. And I highlighted depreciation expense and return on system investment there, because those are the two big items that are driving up that monthly service charge for Caledonia. And that's mostly due to the Caledonia pump station, the new pump station that we recently built. This is a list of all the assets that we put in the service this year. They're all different types of assets, so they depreciate over different lifespans. So you've got the land itself, which doesn't depreciate, you've got the building, which will last roughly 50 years. Process equipment, those are like your big pumps, your steel tanks. And then auxiliary equipment, expensive stuff, but little stuff, like your control panels, your breakers, stuff like that. That was, there's about $5.2 million worth of assets that we put in the service this year, which is a lot to do in a single year. All that depreciation adds about $178,000 to that revenue requirement that needs to be collected every year through water rates. On top of that, there's that return on investment that I mentioned. The cost of issuing municipal debt has gone up almost a full percentage point in the past year. So that return on investment is a little under 5%. You multiply that by the remaining value of these assets, which is $5.2 million, you get another $250,000 that have to be collected for that return on investment, as dictated by our contract. Now that number should hopefully go down over time, because these assets will depreciate, they have less value, we'll have to collect less of a return on them, unless we put new assets in the service. So that's water. Looking at sewer, why are we cutting sewer rates by so much? And the biggest thing is, there's just not a lot that's causing an increase. There's, there aren't new assets going in the service on the sewer side, specifically for Caledonia. So there's really nothing that's having an upward pressure. But you've got a couple of things that are working in your favor. So first, like I said, we balance all this against build volume. And we look at that on a three-year average to try and smooth out any one-year spikes or dips. And if we look at the past three years, sewage consumption in Caledonia has actually gone up a little bit over 6%. And so that's having a downward pressure on your sewage rates of 5.5%. Also, integrated system costs. This one's a little bit weird. The cost of doing business is getting more expensive, electricity is getting more expensive, chemicals are getting more expensive, labor is. But the big thing is, last year's rate study had included a couple of periodic expenses. So every five years, we have to do a comprehensive master plan, where we look at the whole system, what needs to be replaced over the next 20 years. That's a big expense, but it only happens every five years. So it got built into last year's rate study, it's not in this one. And so the calculation says, okay, you actually can cut rates this year. And we try and smooth that out as best we can, but the way that the methodology works, there's only so much fidgeting that we can do. Additionally, you have a smaller proportion of the service districts. So your service district did not change at all, but other communities added area, added land area to what their service district is, which means you have a smaller proportion of those shared costs. And then lastly, like I mentioned, we have these digesters at the waste treatment plant. All of the waste goes into that, we sell that natural gas, as well as renewable energy credits. They're commodities, so their prices fluctuate year to year. So it's really hard to predict this, but we did really well this past year. We, we sold $3.2 million worth of gas and credits, which again, helps reduce rates for all of our sewage customers, so that accounts for another percentage point. So that's how we arrive at that cut of 11.74%. And then lastly, I'll just finish with a quick overview of this whole process. So we start preparing the rate study, which is this whole booklet, it's all online. If you go on the city of Grand Rapids website, you can download a copy of this whole thing. It's all the math that goes into this. We start this process in the late summer, takes a couple of months to prepare. On November 6th, we presented this utility advisory board, which is the board of all of our partner communities. Allison and Todd represent Caledonia on that board. We presented them, that kicks off 30 days where partner communities can come and say, hey, we have an issue with this. We want to make a contribution to reduce rates, we want to change this or change that. And we have a discussion, and we figure out what we can do to make you happy. Then, the following week, I present to the Grand Rapids City Commission. They are the ones that will eventually vote on this, and that kicks off a 20-day public comment period, where any residents can come and lodge their thoughts with us. I'll collect thoughts, I'll meet with communities throughout November, beginning of December. And then December 6th, which is only a couple of days from now, is when we have to finalize the rate study. So that's when the comment period from partner communities ends. I need to finish wrapping up the rate study, so that I can present it to the commission on December 16th, at which point they'll vote whether to approve or disapprove. If they are approved, they would go into effect January 1st, 2026, and they'll be in effect until the end of the year. And we'll start this whole process again August. So that's everything I have. If there are any questions, love to answer them.
Todd, Dick? All right, nope.
I'll just say, as a former member of the UAB that has seen, I think you're the fourth person in this role, I'm really impressed with your understanding and knowledge and ability to present it, so thank you and great job.
Thank you. Same, yeah, you take a relatively unknown and sometimes unappreciated issue and make it understandable, so thank you. For our students, a portion of our community is served by city waters, you know, by municipal water and sewer. Up until literally a few weeks ago, all that water came from drilling down into the ground, pulling it up, putting it into the water tower, and that's how we, you know, have capacity. You fill up big tanks, and then when people need it, you have, you know, capacity, so the pumps don't have to keep up. That's great, other than that water from our, below our feet is pretty minerally. I don't know if you're on a well at your house, but that's what makes your clothes yellow, or it makes the, you know, the white residue when you get out of the shower. And so that has been a real challenge for the users on our system. They typically have to buy additional treatment, so they appreciate having good, safe water. But it wasn't the quality that we wanted. We also had capacity challenges, the water towers only hold so much. And so in order to keep up, the city of Grand Rapids is able to give us better quality water, because it comes from Lake Michigan, which is not below the ground, and they have to filter through all this, the minerals to get into the aquifers. It's much softer, it's rainwater in essence. And then, yeah, so that's why we're switching. But it does come at a increased cost for the things he explained, we're buying, putting up new buildings and new pumps and new storage, and paying for the pipes to get it here, along with many others, so. And then sewer, I'll go quickly on that. The interesting thing on that, we could pump it to the village, which is just up the hill, but it's literally up the hill, we can run it through gravity to the city of Grand Rapids. So gravity is free, you don't have to pay for pumps, and they have bigger capacities. Believe it or not, you can run sewer downhill by, by gravity to the city of Grand Rapids, or we could run it up to the village treatment plant, which also has limited treatment capacity comparatively to the city of Grand Rapids. So that's why we do those things and how we do those things. Any public questions, comment? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 10C, this is a motion to approve adjusting full-time captain and firefighter pay scales as presented. We do have a memo with the recommendation. This has gone through the township personnel committee. Ms. Nugent, can you present? And I know the chief is here to support.
Absolutely, so Scott and I began talking about this, along with our other aspects of compensation in the township, and he brought a lot of data to me, and he was, he was very thorough. He went to all the communities, collected data for firefighters, captains, and he found that we were, as a whole, underpaying our firefighters and our captains. So he came up with, he came up with all the numbers of what he, what he thought it should be to get us in line with what is, what was kind of in the middle of where we should be. But he also, in the process, created a lieutenant category, which allows firefighters an extra level before they get to captain and room for growth. These, these adjustments, while they, while they are raises, the actual difference in cost to the township is $40,000, which, while it is significant, Scott has done a fantastic job of fitting it into our budget and making it a part of our cost. Scott has repeatedly told me, and I'm in full support, that if it comes to taking care of people or equipment, he will always choose people, and I think that is commendable, and he's done a fantastic job of putting everything together. If you have specific questions on those, on those salaries and increases, I think Scott is the best person to ask those questions to.
All right. Having been involved, I don't have any questions. Do other board members have questions about the creation of this new level of status and salary for our public safety? salary for our public safety firefighters? I'll simply say, the presentation tonight, again, showed us, one, what a high quality of service we receive, but also that we also often are the training camp for other departments. And so I think being competitive allows us to retain people, whether they're full-time and looking to make a career of this, whether they're simply people are willing to give extra time. Having had a family member involved, simply the math didn't work for him, and I think part of it's pay versus time, and we ask a lot, and so we, we need to give some as well. So I, I will support this and make a motion that we adopt it as presented.
Support.
Moved by Harrison, supported by Zoller, to approve the full-time captain firefighter pay scales as presented. Any discussion on the motion or the materials? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and that item is approved. Item ten D is an ordinance to amend the Fire Department Public Safety Advisory Committee ordinance. The township is served by a subcommittee that looks at our public safety services, those of the Kent County Sheriff's Department and the Caledonia Fire, as well as those entities that provide ambulance service. That committee is made up of five individuals, we have made adjustments to that, I think at one time we had seven individuals, at one time we had a named member of the village, so we have at times adjusted to meet our needs. We have recognized our partnership with the village, in particular, though, that Brian Bennett, who served as fire chief, is now the village manager, so he kind of has two hats, which gives him a particular expertise, and we have discussed whether he could be a member of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and certainly a qualified member. Under the current ordinance, it says all members would have to be residents. Of course, we have business owners who aren't residents, we have people working in the community who aren't residents, so I think it was somewhat narrow in its, in its perspective, that there's people here who are stakeholders who don't necessarily have residency, and frankly, they can still be taxpayers and not have residency. So anyways, this change will give us some flexibility, by us, I mean the board, those members are appointed by the board, so we can always vet and ensure that there's good representation for the broader community, but we're seeking to change the, take out the residency requirements, simply say individuals qualified. So it'll be five members, three of which will be board members, and two additional which who are simply qualified. So that is the proposal. Any public comment?
Motion approved.
Support. Moved by the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Zoller, supported by a member of the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Snoyk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and that item is approved. Item ten E, this is an ordinance to amend the water connection use and rate ordinance. I will throw it to our manager, and then I know we have our engineer here to answer questions if needed as well.
So we have a couple of properties who have requested that the utility committee and the township as a whole add them to the water utility district. Being added to the water utility district does not create any issues of creating room for higher density. Higher density is created when you, when you extend sewer, not water. So we have, we have Patterson Place, which is a development that is asking to be included, and we have six additional properties that are private properties that would also like to be included in the water district. This ordinance is unique in that most ordinance is take a first and a second read, this ordinance only needs, that needs to be approved, there needs to be a motion to approve. So we were waiting for Patterson Place to contribute their two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar check, that had, that was, that was brought to the office last week as a cashier check, it is in the bank, we haven't had any problems with it going through. Part of that was, we told Patterson, and we, these property, property owners are also, also know that, once that was in, that we would, this would go to the board to be included in the water supply district, so we're asking that the board approve the inclusion of these addresses in this development in the water utility district.
There's, I've had a lot of discussions with Todd, now I just realize one last thing is seventy-three eighty-four Patterson, seventy-three sixty, seventy-three eighty Patterson, ran them to the water district with no pipe in the ground, because Patterson Place was also supposed to at some point put in the water line. So, we extend this, but they have no water access. So, we, we've already talked about what should be done, but now, when I'm thinking about this, we're adding three parcels that have no way of getting water. And, so should we add this to our ordinance? That adds to go to Whispering Stream.
Okay, Mr. Borwell?
Yeah, the, it's anticipating a future water main there, adding them to the, the water district is an opportunity and not an obligation made by the township to extend water and make it available. It, it's just a, to some degree, you know, as homes connect, adding them one by one is, is more work and unnecessary, and so, you know, craft trunk line, when that goes in, we'll add all the, the homes along there. We could add that right now if we wanted to, but there are other places in this water district where water's not currently available, they could be extended to them if, if they wanted to pay for it, or when it becomes available later on, so.
So, one of the, you know, the things so everybody knows is that water main, Patterson Place was supposed to be involved in it, chose not to at the time, as we ran that water line down Patterson Avenue, and we had to do a jog, but it, at Whispering Stream, but it is going to have to be run along Patterson the rest of the way, that's one of the final requirements, so that's why my concerns, and if Todd's comfortable with that, then I'm okay. And we'll have to send that back to Planning Commission for their final approval, their site plan, to have that connected at phase one.
Todd, just for clarity, on the eighty-three seventy, sixty, on the Cherry Valley and eighty-fourth Street properties, in essence, we are adding them to the water district, but not to the sewer district, so we wouldn't be increasing density of those properties, correct?
That's correct.
Because I know we've been asked in the past to, we kind of literally have drawn a line in the sand there and said, we're not going to go across the street and increase density, so this wouldn't affect that, and I just want to be on the record that I'll support providing water to them, but not providing sewer to them, because I do believe we need to start to keep the district compact and not have sprawl of water, because with sprawl of water comes sprawl of density and development, so recognizing that, I will also support this. If you look at where the other properties are located, it's literally the missing puzzle piece from a common sense standpoint, but also, I think, from a looping and system integrity standpoint, so I will support it as well. And I guess finally, just approval of adding them to the water district is an approval of the site plan, I know there are some concerns on the board and in the community about the Patterson Place site plan that will be addressed by the Planning Commission and Board subsequent to adding them to the water district. So with that as an understanding, is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any board discussion or motion?
Move, approval.
Support. Moved by Bradshaw, supported by Hermanet, that we approve the ordinance to amend the water connection use and rate ordinance, adding this named properties. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
Is it a resolution or not? Because it's ordinance.
Do I need to call it a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Snoyk.
Aye.
Mr. Hermanet.
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison votes yes, Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Zoller.
Yes.
And Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
A nuance, some things require a roll call vote, others we can just do a voice vote, so that's why they caught me on that one. Item ten F is a resolution to approve to establish the township supervisor's salary, so an oddity of state laws that every year we have to vote on what our own pay is. The voters get to decide whether we get to do the job, and then we decide how much to pay each other, and it's a very uncomfortable situation. One, because we're talking about money, and we're talking about money for each other and so on, but we're required to do it, and then to add even more strain to it, it's required to be done by the end of the year, so we always end up doing it right before Christmas, which makes it even, you know, even that more uncomfortable. But, with that as the reality, it is before us again, we have looked at pay for our, some of our staff, some of our public safety folks, looking at those, and one of the things we do on a annual basis is look at the cost of living, how much the increase of cost of things erode the compensation that we give to people, and then we try to make adjustments so that that erosion is lessened or equaled, so a cost of living increase. That was two point eight percent this year for staff, and that at least is a starting point in our past discussions regarding adjustments to elected official staff. The first one up is my own, and I would ask that we do not include a cost of living increase for the supervisor, and that we simply continue at that payment level, that would be my request.
Make a motion and give the supervisor two point eight. I think it's only fair, he's taken how many years, he has not taken an increase.
I would prefer the knowing to support my good fellow member. Hearing no support, is there a different motion to be considered?
I'll make a motion that we keep this supervisor's salary what it was and with zero increase.
Is there support for that?
Support.
So move that we, the twenty-twenty-six supervisor's salary be that which it was in twenty-twenty-five with a zero percent increase, discussion on that as a motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? And that, pardon?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Item ten F is a...
It's a resolution.
It's supposed to be a resolution.
Okay, Mr. Snoyk, Hermanet.
Yes.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Harrison votes yes. Henry?
Yes.
Zoller. Robertson.
No.
Okay. Item ten G, this is a resolution to establish the township clerk's salary. Township's clerk salary currently is at twenty thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars. A two point eight increase would take it to twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. We are not limited to a COLA increase for our fellow board members, but that is what a COLA increase would be. With that as an introduction, board members' discussion?
Make a motion at two point eight percent clerk.
Support. I'm support that we approve the clerk at a two point eight percent increase, discussion on that?
I, I guess, I would just like to comment, because this would be the same material that I, I think applies to my position as the treasurer. Last year, first let me begin by saying in Brian's prayer tonight, he said, we don't want to be disagreeable, so I don't want to be disagreeable. But I would like to point out just some observations, that over the last few months, you know, we have adjusted some salaries for the fire chief, I think rightfully so, based on what that job pays, we've adjusted salary just tonight for the captains, we've adjusted significantly some employee salaries based on comparisons to other townships, and John didn't speak to it tonight, but I think last year, both of us made a fairly, I thought, strong argument that she is the clerk and me is the treasurer are, if not the lowest, close to the lowest-paid clerk and treasurer in Kent County. And, and I, I think quite honestly, the, the idea is, is, I, I guess I just don't understand why there isn't a willingness to, to place our salaries in a more consistent range with what other clerks and treasurers make, and I realize there are a lot of full-time and part-time differences there, but, but it's disappointing to me that, that even though Brian, without taking a prayer raise, is not the lowest-paid supervisor among townships with managers, the trustees are not the lowest-paid trustees with respect to other trustees, but the clerk and I, if not the lowest, may be next to the lowest-paid clerk and treasurer in Kent County. So it's certainly disappointing to me that this board is, is not willing to look at that and realizing we're not full-time people, but we're not asking for fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars that other clerks and treasurers make, and then get twenty thousand dollars worth of benefits on top of that. We're actually, you know, only a fraction of that, and I, I think it's very discouraging when you look at the value that we provide for the township, that there isn't a willingness to adjust upwards some of these salaries, so they're more consistent on a pro-rated basis of what others are making. Not trying to be disagreeable, but I'm just trying to make the point.
Further discussion, observations?
I'll just point out one other thing, I do agree with the treasurer that it's disappointing that it's not anywhere near even what an average rate is for a clerk. And just so you are all aware too, we do have to bring in extra staff to pay them for work that I could do, because I am trained and able to do the election work, but because I don't get paid more and have been told not to show up as much, I have done that, and so we do have to pay other staff to come in, because I have one person, my deputy, who does all of the heavy lifting by herself, and yes, she did just get a nice increase, which she is very deserving of, and more, I think. However, it's still, it still costs the township, whether we pay other people or I get an increase, it still is costing us, so for whatever that's worth.
All right. I'm going to enter a, a thought into this, and that is that we are the, a seven-member board of trustees, and so in addition, so all seven of us are trustees, and three of us have additional roles in addition to being trustees. We have a base compensation for our trustees, for the, for remaining members. I am open to consideration that the clerk and treasurer should also be recognized as trustees and adding the trustee pay to their, to their total compensation, which we haven't established trustee.
Is that a motion?
It is a discussion point.
Well, I'll make that a motion.
I support it.
Yeah. So we now have a motion that we, that the twenty-twenty-six salary, so let's, well, Dick, will you clarify what your motion is, so that we know what we're considering?
I can only clarify to the extent that I recall it, but the idea is that the clerk and, and I assume we'll extend it to treasurer when we get to the next item, would have their salary be the total of the trustee rate of compensation plus the existing compensation for the clerk position and the treasurer position.
He said per meeting. He's talked about per meeting pay.
No, I was talking about the base.
You're going to add their base pay?
Well, this is, that's what I'm entering, that we're all trustees, yes.
Trustees get paid on a per diem, so that might be a little hard, because depending upon how many meetings are made.
They get a base rate and per diem, per meeting, so.
My understanding was you were going to give them the per diem, I could see that, but you go ahead.
I don't think we're allowed to take per diem.
You're not.
But you're going to add...
Because we're officers.
We're adding a big percentage that we just did to our professional clerk and professional treasurer.
That's what's being proposed. Yep, so.
I made my motion at two point eight, and I got support.
Yeah, I feel like there's a Robert's Rules issue here, I think there is a motion and support that was already on the table.
Okay.
Now we have a second one, but I don't know Robert's Rules really well.
You made the motion for mine, I don't think there's been a motion.
No, I made a motion for two point eight.
Two point eight percent.
I got support.
Okay, remind me who had the support?
Snoyk.
Okay, moved by Zoller.
Can they amend that?
You can amend a motion, yes, we're now discussing the motion that's on the floor, that a two point eight percent COLA be added to the, and it's only for the clerk, technically that is the issue that's before us.
Don't blame me.
So, Dick, I'm not going to recognize your motion as it's currently not appropriate unless we're amending the motion, but I would like, I'd suggest that we approve the clerk, or that we consider approval of the two point eight, and then we can continue the discussion, if that makes sense. So, the idea of approving the clerk with a two point eight percent cost of living increase is currently before us. We can amend the motion, or we can consider the motion as is. We can amend the motion or we can consider the motion as is. All in favor of having the resolution read 2.8, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
It's...
We're not voting on the resolution, we're voting on what to put into the resolution. So at least currently it says 2.8.
Oh, I get it, yeah.
So that is currently in the resolution determining the clerk's pay. We can make additional additions to the resolution regarding the clerk's pay. Dick, now would be the time to request that in addition to the 2.8, which will take the clerk from 20,000, so...
925.
923, yep. That there be addition of the trustee base, I believe is what Mr. Robertson has requested. Is there support of that?
Right, so when you, just so I understand, I think I support it, but when you say the base pay, trustees are paid a base rate plus a per diem. So you're adding to the compensation the amount of that base rate. Do we know that number?
That number is currently 5319, 5,319. And if a 2.8 is added to that, it would be 5,468.
Whatever words make that right, then that's my, I would make that a motion.
It would be the motion...
Motion to add base trustee pay.
The 2026 approved trustee pay rate, which will be determined. Yeah. Support. Movement support that we add the trustee pay rate to the clerk's pay. Moved by Robertson. And so my math is going to be, it's gonna be 20,923 plus 5,468. You'll have that to help you along. So there's...
Oh, yeah, okay.
So discussion on that.
I'm gonna vote no on this, and only because I'm an ed-driven person. So I appreciate the information that was presented last year or the year before. I can't remember how long it's been. I wasn't in total agreement with all the data, so I think I voted no at that time. But I'm absolutely in support of us making, similar to what our neighbors do, and would consider additional information, but presently I'm lacking that. So that's the reason I'm voting no right now.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion to, on the clerk's compensation for 2026? Okay, the motion that's before us is for the clerk's pay to be the 20,923 clerk's salary. In addition, there is a 5,468 trustee base that would be added to that. I will call the roll, Mr. Snoyk?
Aye.
Hermanette?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
No.
Harrison votes yes. Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Zoller?
No.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
And that item is approved. Item 10G is to approve the township treasurer's salary. Currently, the treasurer is at 18,609. A 2.8% cost of living would take that to 19,130. I would make a motion that we add to the, I'm just gonna bake them the cake together, that we add the 2.8 cost of living for 19,130 and that we also add the 5,468 trustee compensation. That is my motion.
Support.
Moved by Harrison, support by Robertson. Discussion on that. Calling them question, Mr. Snoyk?
Aye.
Mr. Hermanette?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
No.
Harrison votes yes. Henry?
Yes.
Zoller? And Robertson?
Yes.
All right, and that item is approved. Now finally, trustee salaries, currently Kelownia trustees make $5,319 and are paid $121 for each meeting attended with a 2.8% increase. This will take that to $5,468 base salary and $124 per meeting attended. And I would make a motion that we approve trustee compensation at a 2% increase as presented.
Support.
Moved by Harrison, support by Hermanette, that we adopt the resolution to approve trustee compensation. Any discussion? Mr. Snoyk, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hermanette?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison votes yes. Ms. Henry? Mr. Zoller?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
And that item is approved. Item 10J is a motion to approve the installation of a new irrigation well filtration system related improvements for Valley Point Industrial Park, in which we are located, as outlawed by DJ's landscaping at a cost of 28,000, total cost of 28,983, to be split between the four affected parties. There is a memo in your packet. And township manager, would you please present?
So our current irrigation system that waters our grass has not been working for a long time. We've spent a ton of money trying to fix it. It breaks, then we spend money to fix it. It pumps from the creek, it's an old system. Valley Point is a PUD that we're a part of. It's kind of split between the creek, we're the northern portion, and then there's the southern portion. Our irrigation is currently pulled from the creek, and then the northern, or the southern PUD businesses are pulling from the pond. So basically what's going on is Bernie from FCC met with Scott, and he said, "We have the ability to fix this. We could join Grand Rapids Water." However, the cost would probably be close to above $60,000. We just did a line for water to the fire department for fire suppression a few months ago. Or we could look at getting a well. The well would cost the township $28,983 divided by four, so the cost would be $7,245.75. And that would alleviate the issues we have with pumping from the creek. I'm not sure we're even supposed to be pumping from the creek.
Is it from the creek or from the detention ponds?
From the creek, we're pumping from the creek.
Well, our side pumps from the creek, yeah.
Our side pumps from the creek. I did talk to Tim about this. I know there are different ideas, like hooking to Grand Rapids or taking a pipe and piping it to the pond, but there are other considerations, like the drain commission is trying to buy the pond. And the, is, I don't, I think we could go and look at more options. I don't know if it's gonna be more or less expensive. We did get this quote from DJ's. We could technically ask for more, but I think that if we continue on with the current system we have, it's very likely that we're gonna be pumping more than 7,000 over the years to come just in fixing the pump that doesn't work. And I know Scott can speak more to this as somebody who has a background in landscape. We've lost a lot of trees, we can't get grass to grow. It looks like the Sahara in the summer, the township.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
We're in an HOA of sorts. We have agreed up for the, I assume, the entirety of the Valley Point here. Yet it appears that we're kind of cobbling together irrigation here and irrigation there. Is that consistent, I guess, with our HOA or our site plan? How does, does it make sense? I think it's cost, but yeah, how is it addressed?
I'm not sure it's in, because I've sold a couple of buildings in the north that it's in the HOA documents, I think.
So it's just gentleman's handshake and trying to make the place look nice?
I'm looking at this right now, and I think we should table this until we determine, do we have to do this, or should we all be separate? Run our own sprinklers? We have the sprinkler heads in, we just run the line out from our building or your building and a little bit of plumbing and we're done. A few hundred bucks.
Well, is it okay if I comment on that? So here's the hard part, is to give a little background, why we're having this problem last three years. Everybody knew Dave had Evergreen irrigation, lived right on the other side of the township office here. I think he installed the system, took care of it. It was actually a pride for him. He drove through here every day on his way to work. He fur dogged it, the place was great. He retired, sold his business, and we've been through multiple companies since then. The big problem with the creek, to give the mindset, is again, I don't know if it's something we're able to do technically or not, but imagine a couple of feeders down into the creek aiming upstream, so everything comes running on the stream, is hitting the intake. Well, there's a small pump in that pump house over there. I think they call it like a jockey pump. It's supposed to pull the water up from the creek, it is the main pump. Then there's another pump, sends it out everywhere. But the clock for all the valves and all the wires are there. So more than just if, because actually FCC's discussion was, Bernie, basically what he expressed to me was, he was fed up with his grass dying and all. He's done a lot of landscaping, he just put a lot in the building across the street, doesn't want to see it go. So he was looking at, "I'll just do my own thing and fix it." I think what they determined though is, because everything's connected in this whole park underground, we don't know where it starts and stops. And even for us to gain our valves, we'd have to find where our valves are in the yard and then run wires from our valves to make our own clock. We'd have to connect to the main somewhere, and we don't know where to sever the main because everything's underground, there's no ads built. So we might spend a lot of time trying to divide up this into four segments.
Does that address your...
Well, well, here's...
Just cutting to it, it sounds like the system's...
Or do we just start over? You know, it's not gonna cost much more than seven grand to do the small area we have, would you think?
Starting from scratch, you're saying?
Yeah.
I don't know modern day what they charge for boring, because that would be the only problem, getting underneath all of our parking lots, to our lands, across the street, all that stuff. I mean, not across the street, but like one side of the parking lot to the other, our beds are done up here. It's just, starting over, I mean, that's something you get a quote on. I think the easiest thing, and I would dare bet it's most cost-effective, is re-establishing a new water source where it is, because everything's controlled from there, everything's system out. We don't have a problem with the way the system runs, when it runs. We just never have water. I had actually talked with Todd when we were doing the fire main, putting into the building here, and said, "Hey, could we run a two-inch line or whatever it would take, you know, from the main over there down the property line to the building and just, you know, plug and play?" He said, "Yeah, absolutely, you can do that." But after seeing that we paid to come from the street in an open trench that we already dug for the fire service, we had like 65 grand in the excavating, the six-inch main, so the trench was open. They laid a two-inch copper line from the road into here. That was 14,000 the township paid just to put that copper pipe in the ground that was already dug. So if we went all the way from there back, I'd imagine it'd be pretty expensive, and then also they weren't paying for the water. And the other thing that it wouldn't address, and again, talking of the clarity of the water, I don't see the breakdown of what the system is, but one of the things FCC had in there that DJ's doing is they don't want orange concrete staining in the buildings or else like that. So they're putting a filtration system also in the pump house. So basically you have a well, water goes to the filtration system before it gets pumped out onto all the buildings, so we don't have the, you know, yeah, the orange on everything. So, but we have, I think, replaced in the last three years at least two, if not three, pumps. And then what happens with that, DJ's or whoever the service was come out, oh, your pumps burned up, they take it. We'd burn up for the summer, we're waiting for a new pump to come in. They were $3,000 to $5,000, depending on what pump they had replaced. And then the four of us would get a bill for it. Nobody crossed the bridge because there's two separate, even though, I don't know if it's one HOA in here, but on the irrigation side, there's this side of the bridge and there's that side of the bridge. So anytime there's an irrigation repair on this side of the bridge, if it's not site-specific, like we had to pay to fix what we broke when we ran our water main in, but if it's to the pump, to the system, to anything else like that, it gets divided by four of us. So we've gotten a bill for $1,200, $1,500 several times over the last three years for our share of a new pump. And the reason we're paying for pumps is because the intake's plugging, not going up. So if there's a way to find to get water to that house, the valves are already there, the irrigation, you know, control, everything's already there. You can put good water into the system that's there. You don't have to touch anything else on all the other properties. But I had that same thought about what it would take, short of getting multiple companies, I'll do that. It would be just simply saying, "You abandon everything that's in the ground now and start over." I don't know if you could do that for all these properties for 28,000. That's why probably as a whole it would be...
Well, our property probably be blessed, and a couple of the others are a little bit bigger. Burnt would probably be...
Yeah, I just don't know if you, I would be greatly surprised if you could get a whole system for $7,000 installed. But that's, and again, I don't know, we didn't get a quote for that. But this was more or less, we share the cost traditionally, that's why Bernie came up with the...
We got a 40-year-old, we got 40-year-old controls and stuff in that pump house right now.
It's a clock.
That wiring's gonna start rotting away and things like that. I'll do whatever the board wants to do.
Yeah, so, and again, I think Bernie came to me because he has my contact number, talks to me, and I simply forwarded this quote on to manager Nugent to say, "I think you should be our person on this, but I'm just here to answer questions if you have any."
And I can also tell you, speaking from personal experience, we got a quote to do the sprinklers at our house for one acre and it was 20 grand. So I don't know that today's cost, it's not going to be less than 7,000.
Do you know, when Bernie's looking to, there's snow on the ground, so we do have some time.
Yeah.
At least, what would a, have someone come in to tabletop design us a system and say, then we can at least compare an apple and an orange here?
Yeah.
Because we gotta share all those repairs every year on an old system, that's what it...
I think this is a reasonable request. We should see if other alternatives are available, and I'd make a motion to retable.
Support.
Moved by Harrison, support by Hermanette, that we table, that we get at least one new design that would create an independent irrigation system for us to consider. And then we can make a more informed decision at a later date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? All right. Item 10K is to approve a full replacement of the rooftop unit serving the fire department at a total cost of $9,500. Township manager?
So we contract our HVAC every year. We try to go and see who has the best cost per service. This year we contracted with Blaine Mechanical. They've done a great job, but they did find in their inspections that the rooftop unit in the fire barn is failing, and which is pretty consistent with the age of the building and how long the fire department's there. It's probably, you could probably speak to this, about 15 years old. It's cracking. The concern is that it could, one, stop working. That means that the fire department wouldn't have heat, or the cracking could cause the emission of carbon monoxide, which is not good in a fire barn. So we can fix it, but the cost to fix it is about $5,500. And it's a 15-year-old system or more. And it's likely that in another year, a couple of years, we're gonna have to come back and replace the whole thing. So my recommendation is that we replace it and use Blaine Mechanical. I know that per our purchasing and bidding policy, that purchases between $5,000 and $20,000, they have to go for multiple quotes. But I do believe that this is a situation in which I would ask the board to waive that requirement because it's an issue of health and safety and welfare for our firemen. We want to get that replaced, we want to get it fixed, and it needs to be done.
Well, a couple of things.
Mr. Zoller?
We've had this inspected by different HVAC companies. He's the second guy that said it's cracked, and two other guys say it isn't. You know, the heat exchanger's cracked. Maybe it is cracked, maybe it isn't. But if it was such a rush, we should have done it when they found it. So I don't, I'm gonna vote no, because you don't have multiple quotes. We've said that multiple times. When you have things like this, we need more than one quote. I don't know how to get to where we have more than one quote. So at some point, you're gonna have to start giving us more quotes, unless it's an absolute emergency. If it was an emergency, we should have done it two or three weeks ago, when you inspected it.
Okay, others with thoughts on the matter?
I've been involved with this stuff for years. Scott and I have looked at the videos, and you know, that's why we lost one of those companies that did our work, is they said we had a cracked heat exchanger and flat out wasn't.
I can definitely get more quotes for the next board meeting. I just don't know with the, with timing, how quickly they'll be able to come out.
How certain is it that we'll have our second December meeting?
I think it's pretty certain because we have to approve the water and sewer budget.
Okay, I do think best practices should be adhered to, and I'll support delaying this until we can get additional quotes.
Do you want it further inspected, or do you want to just go on a replacement?
I want somebody to come in and inspect in replacement class.
My, I'm agreeing that we should have multiple quotes. I'm gonna trust our professional staff's assessment that it needs to be replaced. So I would support it coming back with multiple quotes for a replacement. That's speaking of myself, but I won't support it tonight regardless, but certainly a majority of the board could. I'm just stating my position on the matter.
If they're gonna come to quota, they usually look at it. But if they can't, can you just get quotes? There's, you have multiple people we've used. You know, there's a couple of guys in Kelownia we've used and things like that.
Additional perspective from board members?
Just out of curiosity, is, I'm assuming this is a fire department expense? I know Scott and I have talked at times about, you know, that the fire department is a tenant within this building, and at some point that these become, you know, tenant responsibilities or general township, you know, because the building is owned by the township. So as, we as landlord take on this expense? I mean, beyond whether it's placed and who does it and whatever, but assuming there's a cost going forward, is there a need to be discussion about whether this should be charged to the fire department or should be charged to the township as, much like the library would charge us to do stuff? You know, we would have to replace an air connector, replace... replace a lot of stuff in the library. Um, but, and I'm not, I'm not taking this one way or the other, but I know Scott and I have chatted with, about some of this stuff from time to time. And I think it's a fair discussion whether, you know, I, I don't think either way is wrong. I, I just, is there, is the, what's the best way, given the fact that the public safety runs a much tighter budget than the general?
Well, how's their lease written up with them?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't think we have.
So it depends on how the lease is written up. That's how it gets charged.
There is no.
All right.
There is.
The item before us is regarding the replacement of the, uh, uh, RTU unit. Any additional thoughts from board members on taking action tonight or requesting additional proposals?
I would say I'm disappointed that our vendor didn't provide a photo of the cracked heat exchanger. That would have been an easy solution.
I don't have it in this proposal, but I think he did send me.
Okay.
Pictures.
Um, for the sake of time, I, you know, maybe we would save a few thousand bucks, but if it's truly cracked, I would rather just replace it sooner than later. Um, so I'm okay with sticking with Blaine just for the safety factor.
Okay. Any additional thought?
Yeah, I, I kinda agree with Tim on that too.
My, my thought was just, if it was really, we're two weeks, it's over two weeks that she's had to quote. So if it really was that bad, it should have been replaced right away. And.
Do they have carbon monoxide?
And it's an outside unit. So we're not gonna get carbon monoxide in the, in the.
Oh, I, I think it can though.
It could.
It could. And we do have a carbon monoxide detector.
It could, but it's, yes.
It, it's a rooftop unit.
Okay.
So it is outside of it. I do have, I don't know if you know what you're looking at, but I have pictures he did send me if you wanna see it.
Yeah, and it came to me after the meeting, didn't it?
Yep, but a good observation that, so given the level of expertise on the board that sometimes they appreciate that information.
That's more my concern is, you know, we've had that questionable, but also it's outside and not getting multiple quotes. And this is another example that I've tried to hit home that I wanna see multiple quotes on, on decks instead of just one quote. Especially he's one of our part-time firefighters too. Um, you know, I wanna make sure he's doing us right.
I wasn't aware of that, so thank you for raising that. Um.
That's always why you want him more in one quote, especially when it's a, you know, boy.
Okay, which direction do we wanna go, board?
That changes it some for me, the fact that I guess the person at Blaine's also works for the fire department?
He's paid on call.
Okay. It's, I think it's a conflict of interest. I'd like to get more quotes.
All right. I'll make a motion that we table this to allow us to receive, uh, more proposals.
Support.
Move support that we table this to receive additional proposals. Discussion on that. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. You opposed, say no? And the item is delayed and shall return hopefully at our next board meeting. M ten L is motion to approve the budget amendments for twenty twenty-five, township manager.
Yeah, so I, I've been working with Marsha to do the budget amendments. Um, I have a list of notes of what got changed. The most notable one that you will see is the amendment to the Emmons Lake, um, drain. We were told for years that it would be forty thousand. It ended up being seven hundred and fifty-five thousand plus. We also paid an additional drain last year. So that is the, probably the largest thing you will see. Um, there is also increase of cost for just membership and training with the township trustees. Um, we also created that cell phone category, which we created in twenty twenty-four, but we didn't have the, that, um, GL number until this year. So that changed it a bit. Um, I can also tell you that, um, we did have an election. We didn't really anticipate any elections this year. I think that the Kent ISD was a bit of a surprise. Elections are always expensive. Um, and then you can see that some of, there's some additional costs, um, specifically with highway repairs. We did, um, approve extra projects this year and extra costs that went towards the traffic signal and sixty eighth street.
All right. I am going to say board members have had an opportunity to review your coverage of these, which is thorough and easy to understand. So thank you for that. Uh, and I'd make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five budget amendments as presented.
Support.
Uh, discussion on the motion, Dick. Anything additional?
Yeah, I, I do have some comments about this. Um, first, just some general observations, uh, only just, it may be suggestions, you know, I did the budget for years. And, uh, one of the things that we do when we approve the budget initially is we, we approve it as a cost center, by cost center, not by line item. And i- if you look through some of these entries here, um, you know, we're, we're doing a budget amendment for fifty dollars or a hundred dollars. Um, when the department total is, where, there's plenty enough money in the department already. So, you know, it's just an unnecessary level of, uh, of, of trying to deal with this. When I was doing it, I, I was looking for things that required thousand dollar amendments, not hundred dollar amendments. And those are just things, some things that caught my attention. Um, another thing that caught my attention, if you go to department two sixty-six, um, what caught me right away is under legal, we had absolutely zero costs in twenty twenty-five. Well, you know, there's no way we go through a year without paying a lawyer or something. So I did talk to Marsha about that and she did make some uh, journal entries to correct that, but that caught my attention that legal would come through, um, with, with no, no billing at all. And so those needed to be corrected. But the biggest problem here, yeah, and, and it's a significant one. And I'm gonna ask you to turn, it's toward the back, but it's the end of the, the general fund budget. It's probably four or five pages, um, from the end there. Yep. So, and, and, and what I want you to notice, if you, if you're on that, it's just above where it says two oh five emergency services. If you look above that at the first column, you'll see that our budget called for total revenues of four million, six hundred thirty-seven thousand and change and total expenditures of four million, six hundred thirty-seven. So we had a balanced budget with a zero uh, surplus or deficit. Now, if you look through the amendments that have been put forward here and just add, just take the far right side and add the total of the amendments that have been added, there's over a million dollars of amendments. And so what the problem here is, you've added a million dollars in appropriations, but have done nothing to revenue to accommodate that. So we would be approving an amended budget that has a million dollar deficit unless we were to do something about it. Now, if the question then, because what do we do about it? Well, there are some easy things to do about it. Um, the easiest, probably almost careless thing to do is just take the million dollars out of fund balance. Just go back to the revenue page, say we're adding another million, one point one million dollars to fund balance, uh, to use the fund balance so that we can balance all these additional appropriations. You know, that would be the kind of, the down and dirty way to get done and be out of here in, in two minutes. The, the correct way to do it, however, would be to go through the budget line by line and simply say, where did we not spend money that we thought we would spend? And all you gotta do is go to parks and rec. You know, we budgeted two point five million or something. And I don't know, what have we spent? A few hundred thousand maybe? Um, in that department. So the correct way that, that you could accommodate that when you get to parks and rec, if I can.
It's just one page back.
Parks and rec. If you look under capital L A, we budgeted two point five million. We've spent two hundred and seventy thousand. So a simple amendment would be to reduce that line item to three hundred thousand dollars. And all of a sudden, now you've covered all of your deficit, just like that. Um, but, but if we were to just approve the motion as it's gone forward with support, is we're agreeing to a, a budget that's got a million dollar deficit in it. Can't do that. Can't do that. And so that would be a simple way or another way would be to work back through the line items in the budget, starting with parks and rec and find enough savings that we're not gonna spend to be able to offset the increased appropriation. That would be the general fund. Now, the fire department is different.
I, I'm gonna stop you respectfully, uh, and say, uh, I'm gonna withdraw my emotion at, and ask that this come back at a, uh,
It has to come back before the end of the year.
Yep, that it, so we, we already said we're going to meet, uh, and I'd ask that it comes back. So I'll withdraw my motion, uh, without objection. And then I make a motion that we table this item.
Support.
Move support that we table the item. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? I will say, uh, respectfully to all involved that, uh, it, I do appreciate that the manager has put considerable time in preparing this, working with your staff, uh, and that if we can resolve these prior to bringing it before the board, I think that would make for uh, smoother, uh, board meetings and better work, uh, for all.
Well, I'm gonna apologize simply because I didn't even look at this budget until yesterday and really didn't finish looking at it till this morning. And Marcia is not the person that does the budget. I'm the person that does the.
I'll, I'll take responsibility because secondly, I'm the person that does.
All right. I'll blame you.
But, but as a, a team, I would say I think that I delegate that to the manager. The manager then works with your staff. So I think we can all own uh, process, uh, potential here on bringing it forward, uh, so that we can all know that these are largely housekeeping. We've done them in the past, but they need to be done right. And I think there, it's important. So, uh, we, we have tabled it, but I'd make that suggestion. But so thank you everyone for your work, but let's improve the process. M eleven is public comment. Does anyone have any public comment? Yes, ma'am. If you could come forward, identify yourself and where you reside.
Hello, my name is Lynn Baird. I'm a business owner on Main Street in Caledonia for thirty-six years. I'm also a longtime resident of the area. And I just wanna thank you for all you do for this growing community. This is the first time I've ever come to a meeting. And I'm so glad I did because one of my nephews is a firefighter. My family goes back five generations in well drilling. So just to see the growth and the changes and all, you guys have a lot on your plate and thank you for all you do. I, um, am passionate about the historic district where it all started by the train station, of course. And, um, we just want to keep that little heartbeat in the whole community as it grows. And I would say it was probably a year and a half ago, we as business owners, with the whole village proper on the highway as well, we met with, um, the township. And we kinda had a round table, the chamber I think put it on. And one of the questions that was asked to all of us is like, what can we do to support you? And I think the biggest thing most of us said was parking. And I will say when I, um, left my salon tonight, there was not one place to park, which is awesome. That means we're growing and I love that. And it's gonna continue. So, um, Brian had mentioned that the township will support us as we grow to try to keep parking everywhere that's needed, but especially in the downtown village proper in the historic district. We love to put events on throughout the year and bring people from the whole community. So, and we'd love to see more businesses. So we're hoping in the future, I know you have a lot on your plate, but that we can kind of keep working together and keep that area growing and thriving as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Just to give some context, uh, from my personal perspective, I agree that, uh, it's important that we support Main Street. I think, uh, we have old M thirty-seven, we have Main Street, and then we have, uh, you know, M six. And I think all of them have different needs and it's important that we listen to those business owners. Uh, I've expressed, uh, early support for the, at least the idea of parking as part of that support. Uh, one proposal that's come up, as you know, is that, uh, trailhead slash parking. Uh, I am still supportive of that as a potential, but I'm also supportive of alternatives. And at our last board meeting, as we went through our, uh, vision plan and so on, I hope I articulated well that I'm still supportive of that, but I'm not asking the board to include it as a funding priority. I looked at the entirety of things we're trying to do, the expense of that. Uh, uh, we had one change to a trail plan that added two hundred thousand plus to the trail plan. So money is spent quickly, as you saw tonight. I'm sure we've spent, you know, hundreds of thousands tonight. And so, uh, I'm still a supporter, but I have to prioritize competing interests. And I'm also supportive of looking for alternative parking solutions uh, for Main Street as well. So that's just me speaking for me and hope that makes sense. So appreciate your, your family and your business as well. Uh, any other public comment? Any board comment? Mr. Snoy?
I'm good.
Mr. Hermanette?
I'm good.
All set.
I'm gonna raise two quick issues. There's been a lot of talk in Michigan and Kent County and frankly, low, uh, uh, gains. Uh, we see data centers becoming a, a very rapidly developing, uh, land use. There's implications to these large scale, uh, land users, energy users, water users. Caledonia is being, uh, identified as a possible location for data centers. I can speak to that. Uh, we've had inquiries on that. So we know that is coming. We, we do have some provisions in our zoning that allows that as a named use or frankly, as a use by right. Uh, so I'm asking our community to begin that discussion because I expect us to have that conversation in a specific manner. I think it's more helpful if we have it in a general manner. We say, what should the rules be regarding data centers? Where are they most appropriately located? That we can prepare so that when someone comes in, no different than a housing development, no different than a hair salon that we have given thoughtful without saying, well, Lynn's hair salon is different than the one at Great Clips, uh, that we look at data centers in the general sense. And so I'm gonna engage our planner, our manager, our planning commission, uh, and us, uh, to, to have that conversations. Again, I'll go out on a limb where I probably should stay close to the trunk and say, I'm generally supportive. I think data, just like energy production, just like anything, I think it's something that is very important to, uh, our nation, to our national security, to our economic growth. Uh, I think it's important, uh, clearly. And so I think we can't be a NIMBY entirely. We need to look at like all things responsible ways to accommodate it. And then legally, we can't have exclusionary zoning. We say never in Caledonia where we have a data center. You can't legally exclude them. So looking for responsible, thoughtful conversations on the potential of data centers coming to Caledonia. Cause I think we're going to be asked. And so we should get ahead of that where it's not talking about, not in my backyard, but in a general, where should, where and what should these, uh, contain? So look for that coming in the new year and then separate, but kind of equal to that, or somewhat related when, under the umbrella of land use. Many moons ago, you had to have two acres in Caledonia to build, uh, a home. That's not necessarily smart land use in the sense that it eats up a lot of property. You, we know you can build homes on a lot smaller acre. But it does preserve, uh, our rural character. And so I would say probably in the majority of township property, two acres is still the requirement. But because of utilities, things we discussed tonight, utility service districts, sewer in particular allows more density. I want us to take a, we kinda put broad brush, broad minded, uh, you know, colors on the land use map. And then when things happen, we're like, boy, it's getting busy and crowded around here. So I would like to take a look in the new year at our land use map, uh, not only for data centers and things like that, but also have we maintained the rural preservation standard in the appropriate areas and have we allowed for density in the appropriate areas? And it, uh, maybe we have, but I think it's worth looking because I can't tell you how many square feet are in this room. I'm a bad judge of, until I see things. I know what is a similar sized room looks like, but I couldn't tell you how many square feet in this room. Same when I look at a piece of property, like I have no idea what four hundred houses looks like when they're built. I'm like, gee, that's a lot. So I think if you look at our neighbors, uh, this is going to be an issue and land use is one of the more important things that we do. So I'll be looking at two acre minimums. Where should those be maintained? Should they be extended in other areas? And then finally, the flip side of that coin is our water and sewer district. We added some properties this evening to the water district, which I think can be justified. But I really think we should be very hesitant, uh, extending water and sewer because it, it drives density and drives sprawl. So I will be hesitant beyond what's already on the books to allow additional areas, given that we're trying to manage Caledonia's growth and the demand, uh, and be thoughtful and respectful to people who've owned properties. But we also have to maintain the rural character. So that's something I want us to look for. So.
Just wanna say thank you to my fellow board members.
All right. Mr. Zoller?
All set.
Mr. Robertson?
I just, you read my mind because my question, a board comment was gonna be, is a data center coming to Caledonia Township?
We haven't been proposed one, but, uh, I know they're looking.
Yeah, because we've had inquiries, uh, in our department about the potential taxes of, you know, some huge. Yeah, because we've had inquiries, uh, in our department about the potential taxes of, you know, some huge things coming in. And so we're like, gee, what's all that? And so, um, I, I'm glad you brought it up and I fully support your, um, recommendation that we get ahead of it because, um, I did on my YouTube feed, I, I saw one come and then all of a sudden you get delus with data center stuff. And, and, uh, and even in West Michigan, there's quite a bit of pushback on them. So I'm, I'm glad we're getting ahead of it.
Alright, uh.
Motion adjourned.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post a no. Thank you very much.